...in writing on email, postal service, and personal phone call. The voters may be history candidates and receive my prepared remarks. Secondly, the public was notified of the event through Rancho Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce media advertising, e-newsletters, social media, DCM meetings, those were the Business Connection Network meetings, and printed marketing materials as well. All candidates were provided tonight's questions a week in advance in order to prepare their answers for the forum. Members of the Rancho Cucamonga Chamber had an opportunity to submit questions for the candidates. The top questions were selected by the Forum Planning Committee of the Rancho Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce and Board of Directors. In order to hear from every candidate on each topic, the same question will be answered and asked by each candidate. And the order, seating has been chosen at random. The first question will begin with candidate one for District Two, and the second question will begin with candidate one for District Three, and we'll alternate back and forth. I'll be easy through it, don't worry. In an effort to stay on schedule, we ask the candidates to keep their answers limited to the time allotted. Our timekeepers in the front row here will be tracking each question, and colored cards will be raised to represent the time from one minute to ten seconds left. A green card indicates sixty seconds, as you can see. The yellow card indicates thirty seconds. There's that, a red card for ten seconds, and finally you'll see stop. So, pretty clear. Now, audience, this is for you, this is important. Tonight's forum is being recorded for future viewing and distribution purposes, so please help us to ensure that our viewers can hear each response from all of the candidates. Additionally, as Derek shared previously, the intent tonight is to hear the views of every candidate, and out of respect for everyone in the room, we ask that the following round goes be respected. First, we ask that the room remain quiet throughout the forum. In particular, please hold your applause until the conclusion of a given question. We also ask that any negative remarks or noises be avoided. We expect that everyone in the room behave respectfully throughout the forum, and we thank you for that. The Rancho Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce reserves the right to dismiss any unruly guests or stop the forum if misconduct from the audience is noted. At this time, please take a minute, blow all your cell phones, if you could silence those, that would be appreciated. And again, I thank you for your secure cooperation. One other note, this is not a debate tonight, it's not a community forum, it is a candidates' forum. And we've structured the evening to give every candidate a chance to respond to each question, and there will be doorbells beyond the limited time allotted to each candidate for each question. So each question will be ninety seconds, please use that time to share your point of view, and there won't be any additional opening or closing remarks. And finally, the forum will be hosted by the Rancho Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce and will solely be focused on issues deemed most important to our local business community. That means that this evening we will not address every issue of concern to the city of Rancho Cucamonga. Instead, we'll be focused on several key areas, including the local economy, business challenges, quality of life, and future vision for the city. So with that, we'll get started. I see that for District Two, we have one candidate here, that's Christine Scott, and so we will begin with Ms. Scott for the first question. As a reminder, you have ninety seconds for each question. So the first question, please introduce yourself, and include how long you've lived in your district and why you're running for the City Council.
Thank you, Greg. First, I want to thank the President of the Board, as well as some members of the Chamber and the Board of Directors for holding this forum today and for the opportunity to be here. For those that don't know me, my name is Christine Scott, and as Greg already mentioned, I'm running for City Council District Two. Growing up in the Inland Empire, I had opportunities to work and live in different communities, but when I came time to purchase my first home about five years ago, there was no other community that I wanted to live in than Rancho Cucamonga. I wanted to live here because of the safety, because great parks, schools, or working libraries, as well as the other many, other many, other amenities around here. When I went to Rancho Cucamonga, I made a commitment to myself to get involved in the community that I lived in, so I applied for, I was appointed to the Rancho Cucamonga Library Foundation, or I still promise to be president. Through my volunteerism, I've been meeting with other groups of folks and volunteering their time in the city, and been really proud to live and represent the city of Rancho Cucamonga. So one of the reasons why I am running for City Council is because I want to ensure that progress continues in Rancho Cucamonga, since the greatest world war played in the Inland Empire.
Thank you, and you did it in under ninety seconds. So, that was really good, well obviously. We'll move on now to Mr. Cutler. Same question, please introduce yourself, include how long you've lived in your district and why you're running for the City Council.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate y'all taking the time to come out, learn more about candidates, and participate in this democratic process. Thus, I'd like to thank the Chief of Culture, Organization, and those who... My name is Benjamin Cutler, I've been resident since 2008, and I've lived in District Three for the majority of that time. I work full-time as an IT Business Analyst, and I know that term can mean a broad title within a company, but over the last fourteen years with my current employer, it's meant that I do need to keep business, IT operations running smoothly. My job is to help the company work efficiently and save money. I enjoy the challenge of finding solutions and problems and improving efficiency through the use of technology. Outside of work, I've served in various capacities on my homeowners' association board. I'm currently serving as Board President alongside my neighbor, Mr. Steinhardt. As a Board Member, I help manage different challenges brought to me from vendors and residents, and enjoy finding solutions to those challenges and serve my neighbors. I have experience acting as a fiduciary to manage funds, work within a budget, and ultimately protect homeowners' investments. And I think my skills and experience will help us maintain long-term budget stability, return to prudent growth, and help solve our problems with traffic, crime, tax, and other ways. I hope I can earn your vote and use my skills to serve the city of Rancho Cucamonga as Councilman.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cutler. And just as a reminder to all the candidates, make sure to pull that microphone as close to as possible. You were fine, but just make sure it's a little closer, then it'll be helpful for everyone. Mr. Schneider, please introduce yourself, include how long you've lived in the district and why you're running for the City Council.
Well, first, thank you very much, Mr. Schneider, Greg, for putting this forum together. You know, it's been an honor, sort of, for the last four years as your California State Assembly Member, and prior to that, serving here on City Council. I'm a small business owner, I've been a small business owner in Rancho Cucamonga for over twenty years. I started an advertising agency in 1998, and I started a chain of pizza places in 1999 called American Pizza Company. I grew it to three locations, I've seen five locations over that sixteen years, and I've sold in corporations since then. I understand what it is to be an entrepreneur in Rancho Cucamonga, and especially in the state of California, and the challenges that are ahead of us, and I've worked hard to make sure that I have the voice for taxpayers, for workers, for middle-class families, and for small businesses. As an Assembly Member, I have about $300 million backdoor strategic investments from the state, specifically $60 million for Rancho Cucamonga to do a rate separation off of Edelweiss Avenue and road repairs. I have sponsored pet adoptions, active sugar training, senior scam workshops, veterans' resource fairs, job fairs, and many other programs here in the city. As your voice for the legislature and on City Council, I have been a consensus builder, and I have been effective. In the nearly two decades that I've lived in Rancho Cucamonga, I have loved all this city, my home, and it's a great privilege and honor to be here today and ask for your support to be returned back to Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. And Mr. Redarte, would you like to repeat the question?
No.
You're kidding me, okay, sorry.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, I've lived in the district for five years. Currently, I have the real estate business in town. I represent buyers and sellers, not developers. And thirty percent of my business is in town. I live here, my office is in town, I go to church in town, so I have a great interest in the community. A big part of our money is because we've seen a little bit of deterioration of quality of life in the city. A lot of property crimes are happening, break-ins, mailboxes, car break-ins, et cetera. In addition, a lot of red tape that's going on at City Hall when business owners try to apply for different permits. So, our money is to streamline the process, not only for business owners, but also to start to improve the quality of life in the district. And thank you for asking for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, and thank you to the Chamber for hosting this event, and thank you all for being here this afternoon, evening. My name is Ryan Hutchinson, and I got my first job when I was sixteen years old selling parking tickets at Quake Stadium. When I turned nineteen, I earned my real estate license and went to work down on Haven Arrow Highway at GMAC Finance. A year later, I moved my office to Victoria Gardens Mall and worked for All Nations Realty Investment. In 2009, I graduated from Plural Mountain College with a degree in economics and bought my first home on the corner of Gate Creek and Baseline. I still own that home today. I've worked in both the Bay County Ranch of Cucamonga District for eleven years, and I've lived here for nearly eight years. I did a brief stint in Redlands while I remodeled eighteen ninety-six Victoria Home, there's seven bedrooms, and I see that with that to Rancho Cucamonga as quick as I could, and I live now just north of where the new state of California is. I'm a licensed real estate broker and a general RE contractor, and I've built my business here since I was a teenager. Since then, I've helped over forty different families move into Rancho Cucamonga's third district alone, and I've briefed some of my professionals, and now I have some personal ones, and that has become a leading member of the community that has helped foster my success. I want to be a service to sacrifice and to give back, to elevate other people's needs above my own, and to work for my friends and neighbors to improve their quality of life as a member of the team that helps make Rancho Cucamonga the best it can be.
Thank you, Mr. Gaios.
Time. I want to thank the Chamber for allowing us to be here today, I appreciate it. My name is John Gaios Ferro. I'm a retired police officer, the Milwaukee Police Department of Bravery. I currently work for the Los Angeles Department of District Attorney's Office as a Supervising Attorney Officer, or I assist victims of crime seeking justice. My past experience serving in the public is as an elected school board member, also as a member of the Board of Directors during the cultural association, Senator of the County Fair, and the Inland Chamber Director and State Senator for the Retired Police Officers Association, State of California. I've lived in this district, I've lived in this district for about six years, elected as City Council, have worked for Republic Safety, created Smart Roadplan, be the voice of the taxpayers arguing, and be an advocate and fighter for the residents of Rancho Cucamonga on the issues impacting their daily lives.
Thank you. You're all doing outstanding, and you all came well prepared, thank you. Well, now shift to our next question, which talks about the major issues facing the community of Rancho Cucamonga as a whole, and we'll begin this one with Mr. Cutler. The question is, what do you consider to be the most important issue facing the community of Rancho Cucamonga that must be addressed during your term if elected, and how do you intend to address or resolve that issue? Mr. Cutler.
Well, first, I believe Rancho Cucamonga is a wonderful city, and I'm proud to tell people that I meet that I live here because of our unique mix of amenities and overall pride of the community and our heritage. That is why I think our most important issue at the moment is how we decide to move forward with our approach to development of our last remaining space and possible annexation of the land north of the Los Angeles High School. It's great that the economy is doing well and that investors want to build here, but I think we need to make sure we don't lose sight of our history and why we've enjoyed living here. After all, Rancho has earned a reputation as a city of vision. I've heard from many, as I walk door to door and speak to people, about projects like one being on foot and on air, most of them wildly, in their words, wildly out of place for a community like ours. I'd go as far as saying it's irresponsible to continue to plan to have such density built in an area that those members have meant to support it. Additionally, giving developers significant zoning and building code exemptions to reduce parking and setbacks from the roads and increased building heights, like, and the condos that are being built with grades over thirty percent like those behind Cinemark, is not what residents want, and it's not, and it doesn't fit the character of the surrounding neighborhood. As a member of the City Council, I would stand in opposition to developments that don't meet the needs or wants of our current residents and our existing development codes. We don't need to build our city to be like other cities, and I would work to attract businesses, to build our investor zones, to provide opportunity for local good-paying jobs instead of higher-益性 housing.
Thank you. I'll repeat the questions, just so our audience can hear it again. What do you consider to be the most important issue facing the community of Rancho Cucamonga that must be addressed during your term if elected, and how do you intend to address or resolve that issue? Mr. Cutler.
Well, thank you, Greg. So, it's interesting, I thought for sure that when you speak with the residents and the voters in Rancho Cucamonga, that it's really going to come across as being crime. The increase in crime that we're all feeling, specifically property crime, is a result of propositions forty-seven and fifty-seven. I know as a legislator, I introduced legislation two years ago, it's called the Protect Our Homes Act, would allow each of us, if we spend more money for those ring doorbells or surveillance systems, we should be able to write that off our taxes, at least under $500. And it's something as a Councilmember, I think we need to look at as well, as we knock on doors, there's a whole lot of ring doorbells out there. So then I thought, what about, you know, building central park? That's been promised and being made to our residents for over twenty, twenty-five years, and yeah, that is something that's, that's dealt with, and a lot of people are very concerned, and I'm working very hard with the Strategic Growth Council in the Governor's Office to see about bringing back Rancho $64 million to try and help complete that park. And I'm working diligently on that project, just like it's $60 million for Edelweiss Rate Separation. But with speaking to the residents, annexation is really that key care about. They're worried about the strain on traffic, they're worried about the strain on their schools, they're worried about the city is overcrowded as it is right now, and, you know, the extra 700 acres, 1,200 acres, 4,000 acres, you know, there's a lot of different visions for what the view is there. I believe for us to really reflect the community, we need to allow this annexation to be brought to the vote of the public. It should not be left up to City Council, it should be not left up to the Board of Supervisors, it should be the residents of Rancho Cucamonga that decide whether they wish an annex as parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Mr. Redarte.
I have a little different perspective when I'm going out and talking to neighbors. People are pissed, people are pissed about the urban element that's going on in town. They see these high rises coming up, and they're not happy, and they feel like they have not had a voice, apart from either the planning commission or from the City Council. There's these very hard appearances that are going on that are impacting neighborhoods, they're going to impact the schools, they're going to impact people that live in the communities, and that's one of the biggest things that I follow. Another thing is crime. You go into somebody here is disagreeing, and more and more cameras are popping up. House after house. Why? Because of break-ins. And that's one of the major things that I've heard, is property crime, the problem, I've somebody broke into my neighbor's house, somebody broke into my house, somebody stole my mail. You go on the news groups, on Facebook, every day, somebody stole packages, somebody stole mail. So, a big issue that needs to be addressed, and I think you better conversation with the Sheriff's Department as far as how that's being addressed, whether it's with special assignment officers or some type of, other type of program to target this. Another thing is, people are complaining about the lighting assessments or the park assessments, and I think it's just a big thing of, they don't have proper communication as far as how this was voted on and how this has impacted residents, so people are upset about these extra assessments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
I can tell you without a doubt that the number one issue in our city is public safety, and I can tell as I look in people's eyes as I stand on the armed portion. Sacramento legislation has changed felonies into misdemeanors. What that's meant for Rancho Cucamonga is more car break-ins than more mail theft. That proposition that changed felonies into misdemeanors was called the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, everybody. The only way I, the only way that I want to help, one way that I want to help, is to fight crime, and that's through automated license plate reading technology. That being said, I want it in every license, at every single entry point in the city. What it does is snaps a picture of license plates and sends a message to officers on the beat when cars have been stolen. Officers have tremendous, a tremendous amount of success in tracking down stolen cars and stolen property, and we need to get these people with a coming endorsement. The next Councilman must have safety as their number one priority, and I stand before you as the only candidate District Three endorsed by every aspect of law enforcement, from the, from the law enforcement officers that patrol our streets every day, to the prosecutors and defending victims of crime. They endorse me because my number one priority is your safety.
The most important issue facing our community is public safety. Crime is on the increase, but crime is coming from outside of the city into our city. Burglaries and thefts and stolen vehicles have spiked in the last few years. With the early release programs coming back, I have seen an increase in crime throughout the state and now our community. With my law enforcement background and knowledge of criminal justice system, I could work with our police department and making our city a safer place to raise our toll, using the following moving methods. Community-oriented leasing, increasing use of criminal technology, there's new texting, there are illegal texts that are applying to dispatch centers. Also, with the smartphones that are out, people could take photos of suspects that are committing crimes and send those photos directly to the MGCs of police vehicles and computers that they have in their vehicle, so that the officers were looking for in that office. Homeless and domestic violence crisis teams, and more legal license plate readers. I'd also like to see advanced training for our first responders, and something else we need to look at is, I would like to see progress for our youth when it comes to suicide prevention and anti-illegal progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Greg. Crime and robbery are always a weight to be a pressing issue facing the community, but I think another important issue facing the city is the development of some parks in the community. Given that it's a safe place to come together and is of utmost importance to me, I think the challenge comes from the fact that the city must also live within its means, so citizens of Rancho have let it be known that they do not support recent assessments to offset the cost of these facilities. So, resources are limited, we have to live within our means, but we do in our own personal budgets. If elected, I have five ways to stretch our resources, including purchasing grants and other outside funding sources to help offset the costs for these facilities. I think another issue that's facing our city, and I know it's the one, but is the state always trying to take away our resources as well as local control. I mean, we see what happens when they take away our redevelopment funds and try to take away our vehicle license, we help pay for services, which is police safety program, health safety programs, and roads and schools. So, as a Councilmember, I want to make sure we maintain local control, and work with organizations that the city has already established, which is the health and the cities, to make sure that no additional funding resources are taken away and have remained local control.
Thank you. So this next question will shift to talking about the business community specifically. So we'll begin with Mr. Schneider for this one. The question is, what do you perceive to be the top challenge specifically facing the business community in Rancho Cucamonga, and how do your skills, experience, and background prepare you to successfully help to address this challenge?
Great question. As I've stated, I am a business owner, and I grow businesses for a living, and during the time that I was a Councilmember and also serving in the Assembly, I have maintained running my business the entire time, helping businesses grow. So I understand the challenges of doing business in California, and I'll tell you, you have all this red tape that goes into trying to open a business in the city itself that we want to work on. We also know that on the state level, we're over-regulated, we're over-taxed, and if you want to try and build something in the state of California, good luck with CEQA, trying to get through that, and that's a challenge all to itself. But where I did work very diligently as a Councilmember back in 2013, I worked with one of the companies here in Rancho Cucamonga that was looking at whether they needed to grow, sell, or close, called Golden Island Turkey. And here the story told by Anna Kline, the former president of the company before they sold it to Hillshire Farms, they reached out to me, and they said, hey, we're at full capacity, how do we continue doing business in Rancho Cucamonga where we're already at triple shifts, we're already filling our capacity, and how do we move forward? So I sat down with our city manager, all the department heads, every individual department that had a stake in the construction of their new production line, and we sat down and planned out in advance all the challenges and hurdles that they would have to overcome with the city. Now, they ultimately sold their corporation to Hillshire Farms, and Hillshire Farms actually attributes Rancho Cucamonga as being the easiest city for them to build their newest production plant in the most timely manner that they've seen throughout the state of California, let alone the United States, and it was strictly because of the council, staff, the actual client themselves, all interacting in it, and it's...
Thank you. Lots of good questions, I had. What do you perceive to be the top challenge facing the business community in Rancho Cucamonga? How do your skills, experience, and background prepare you to successfully help address that challenge? Mr. Redarte.
Okay, so I'm a small business owner for over twenty years. One of the biggest things is red tape, just take back on Mark's statement, whether it's sign ordinancees, the permitting process, it's a lot of red tape. You go into City Hall, you get, try to get help from the planning department, and they reject your plans, and then they send you away, but nobody wants to help because it's not their job, they're just there to approve or recheck, and so that's been one of the most frustrating processes. I know three franchise owners that were trying to open a town and have delayed anywhere for four to six months. It costed not a lot of money, but also a lot of difficulty, the city, because of the frustration with the permitting process. So part of my experience is to try to catch on with the red tape and create advocacy so that we can help business owners to do well, and also promote some type of grants and funds to assist owners so we don't lose each other's communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
I can tell you as a small businessman that I signed the Fund Act check. I balance budgets to act whether there's a recession. Businesses in our city that employ residents want transparency, predictability, and customer service. When I stand at one of the administrative desks in City Hall, I want to be met with someone who has these problem-solving can-do apps. It's not enough to hear them if they can't rely on your project. I want us as a city to help find solutions and give suggestions on how we can solve problems. Your Councilman, I want to be directly involved in making businesses successful, which means personally having a bold indoor businesses and helping improve them towards a city. I want to be part of this team establishing growing commerce, which is why I'm an active member of the Rancho Cucamonga Board. I think that the relationships that I've created, my degree in economics, my experience and ideas will make me a successful candidate and a partner to serve our business community.
Mr. Gaios.
Well, some of the challenges facing businesses are regulations and red tape. We have been, we have been business owners in the high desert for over twenty-four years. We would like to bring our business to Rancho Cucamonga, but the increasing of alternative business and labor keeps us from opening our successful business here. As your Councilman, I will work hard to make small businesses flourish by working with city departments to streamline business application processes and make it more affordable to open businesses. I feel that the city should work in conjunction with county and other regulatory agencies to make the process of opening our businesses easier and faster.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Sure. I think one of the top challenges I see facing the community is making sure the city remains business-friendly for those that want to do business in the city of Rancho Cucamonga. I also want to make sure that some of that permit and inspection fees remain reasonable and how we're working with the potential businesses to meet their deadlines, that way there's no further delays and to order any basic costs. I personally understand the challenges of this, as my role with the Southern California Gas Company, I personally work with all the cities, including Rancho Cucamonga, to apply for permits and to help expedite things on our new businesses to make sure that they're going in on time and that there's no further delays. My job with the gas company is to protect the right care, which is the sustenance of the city of Rancho Cucamonga, so my expertise can happen personally with this, with helping different businesses try to get through the same process. Another thing that I would like to do to challenge the city is making sure we have an educated workforce. That could work with some of these businesses here moving to Rancho Cucamonga. I used to serve on the county workforce investment board, a lot of times we have businesses here that can't find the educated workforce needed, and so I would aim with the city working with local schools, community college, as well as our small local businesses, trying to establish on the job site training or education assistance, and I'll make sure we have an educated workforce that be the Council and working player.
Mr. Cutler.
Operating a business in California, it's already tough enough. I know this firsthand because my dad has operated his own medical and retail businesses for the last twenty-four years, and I've observed and held up through the ups and downs. I think the City Council needs to support local business, the local business community, especially small business startups, they need it most. I would work to create a culture of support. I would also work with the Small Business Administration and JCP College to promote training programs to residents who want to start and build a successful business here. I will work to attract large businesses, build our remaining investor zones, to bring local good-paying jobs to our city. I think we also need to look at how we can bring more transparency to the code enforcement or the community improvement department. This department's purpose needs to be to support residents and help businesses meet codes rather than punish or perhaps chase them out. Through the use of online and mobile service tools, we should be able to give business owners and the enforcement department fair and open the process for resolving issues while balancing the department's focus on the safety of residents. My work experience in integrating similar solutions in the corporate world will translate well into city operations, I think. I think the fewer trips that business owners have to make into city offices, the more time they will have to build success. Again, I've observed both rewards and challenges of operating small businesses with my dad, and he can attest that I would be an advocate for small businesses.
Thank you. So we're going to move on, we're moving quickly because we have two fewer candidates than anticipated, so we're on our final question, and we'll begin this one with Mr. Redarte. The question is, if elected, how would you help to preserve and enhance the quality of life for residents in Rancho Cucamonga? Based on the scan, what's your perception?
Based on staff, which is perception from a lot of residents in the community. Another issue is, it's maybe a family issue or school district issue, but suicide is hard right for our children, and that's a quality of life issue that needs to be addressed. And I think the city does need in collaboration with the school districts to help stop that, because that's one of the issues, whether it's cyberbullying, bullying in the schools, the city should take an active role, and also work with the schools, with communities to try to come up with solutions. As a former LAPD police officer who worked in the streets, I do know what it takes to help minimize crime, and that's working hand in hand with increasing neighborhood watches or even special assignment officers in order to target the property crimes in the area. And closing an ass for a vote, my role as a city council is to be a voice of District Three, not of just the management.
Mr. Hutchinson.
My platform is simple: public safety, traffic management, and finishing Central Park. Rancho Cucamonga is approximately eighty-five percent built town right now, which means we have to start taking a close look at the planning stage of our proposed projects to mitigate as many negative surface risks as possible, namely being traffic. That means limiting high-intensity development because we have less and less space. I advocate for homeownership because through single-family homes and home with houses and homeownership, families can build prosperity, stability, and wealth. Due to the revision of the master plan, Central Park will be eligible for state and federal rans next year. We can create unique partnerships that make us eligible to apply for these rans. So, I'm talking about finishing Central Park without a bond, without taxes, but without singing any for it. I have been in thirty-three out of the last thirty-six council meetings, spanning back to April of two thousand seventeen. I have heard twenty-seven different endorsements for this city, from U.S. Congress to State Seven, veterans, public safety, our water board, and our school board, and I've committed myself to my friends and neighbors by knocking personally on ten thousand one hundred and fifty-eight doors in our city. It's on those parents that I humbly request your vote and your support. Thank you.
That's a lot of walking. I believe in smart over the home space. My family and I enjoy running our bikes along the Pacific Electric Trail and hiking at the Elan Falls. One of the reasons we moved here was because of our great city's culture and value and places on recreation, of working parks, libraries, great schools, and community college. As your city councilman, I will work hard in preserving the way of life that all Rancho Cucamonga's, that's hard to say, Rancho Cucamonga's have come to expect and enjoy. Safety, a smart role model, and being a advocate on the issues impacting their daily lives is what I will fight for. And on November six, I humbly ask for your support and your vote. Thank you very much.
Mr. Goddard.
Well, my experience with organizations such as Rancho Cucamonga, Library Foundation, Boys and Girls Club, the Inland Harvest and Leadership Council, as well as Inland Action and the San Diego County Sheriff's Information Exchange Committee, has given me the knowledge and deep understanding of what our city needs to enhance our quality of life. I want to work to keep Rancho Cucamonga a great place to live, and we do that by protecting our quality of life. One way that we do this is by making sure our neighborhoods remain safe. As the only city council candidate in any district to be endorsed by both the police and fire, I want to make sure that the men and women of our police and fire departments have the resources and tools they need to do their jobs. I want to see the city continue to invest in our infrastructure, which will lead to economic development as well as the development, maintenance of parks and sports facilities in our city. Preserving our quality of life takes work in collaboration with our first responders, schools, businesses, communities, community groups, local officials, officials, and most importantly, our residents, and that's what I intend on doing. And if you allow me to leave you guys' evening, and I humbly ask for your support when you member six.
If elected, I will work with the City Council to ensure we're operating within the spirit of our city's general plan, all promote traditional values when it comes to growth and development, and operate with fiscal responsibility. I will encourage the council to more actively engage with residents and small business owners before voting on whatever projects that need to be done, like annexation, Central Park, road maintenance, traffic management, crime reduction, and our construction trails. We also need to ensure we do everything possible to accomplish these things with an aim for long-term budget stability that prevents placing additional tax burden on residents. I am not funded by the Fire Association, any current city council members, Builders Association, real estate developers, or any political group. I will work with these groups, but I am an independent candidate with desire for transparency and fairness to city leadership. I am accountable only to the residents of Rancho Cucamonga, and I offer my values and experience and commitment to keep Rancho